It's 10:00 AM, October the first. Called the meeting of the Montague County Commission to Order. Ask you to please stand for a moment of silent meditation. Remain standing for the pledge. Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Diane.
First, happy to get your back.
Yes.
Okay, exonerations. We have eighteen listings, eleven thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and forty-two cents for tax years two thousand twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Fiduciary orders for October first and confirmation of settlements. Minutes for September seventeen. Vouchers, General County Fund, three hundred seven thousand one fifty-five forty-four. General County Purchasing Card, nineteen thousand five eighty oh two. Cole Severance Fund, thirty-seven thousand four seventy-four oh three. Camp Muffley, three twenty-nine fifty-five. Chestnut Ridge Park, six ninety seventy-one. Mason Dixon Park, seventy-three twenty-eight. Teen Court, eleven thousand fifty-six twenty-six. Home Confine, nine thousand one eighty-one eleven. Nine One One Cash, one thousand nine twenty-five eighty-five. For a total of three eighty-seven, four sixty-six, thirty. And there are no budget revisions.
Move for approval.
Second?
Have a motion for approval on second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renetta.
I have one item for reimbursement today. The first is the Emergency Solutions Grant Program for the month of August for five thousand, I'm sorry, six thousand fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents. That's the only item.
Move for reimbursing.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Some miscellaneous items today for your approval. The first is a letter of support. You all know that we're submitting an application to the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority for some funding to replace a portion of the HVAC system. This is just a letter of support for each of you to sign, just to come from the application.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yeah.
Move the support.
And authorize the President to sign.
And authorize. All three of us to sign.
All three of us.
And all three of us to sign.
Authorize them.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Currently, we have a drug court implementation grant. Actually, it's in its fourth year, but we are requesting that it be extended for another year, so that would be five years, because there is about a hundred thousand dollars still that we have not spent. This is a letter that the President needs to sign for our justification for a no-cost grant extension for the Montague County Adult Drug Court grant.
Move for the President to sign the drug court.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the last thing is I have a cost reimbursement agreement between us and the West Virginia University Resource Corporation. About a month ago, we had a grant awarded to the West Virginia WVU Center for Excellence in Disabilities. And I'm not exactly how the whole chain works, but the West Virginia University Resource Corporation handles all of the grant funds that are funneled through to all of their departments. So they're just asking that the County Commission enter into agreement with WVU Research Corporation, just spelling out the reimbursement process and...
Reimbursement for what?
Reimbursement for any costs associated to the grant.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Okay.
Could you say it again?
Okay. They are wanting us to enter into agreement.
Okay.
Just to cover themselves and cover us as far as the reimbursement process goes.
Kind of like a liability?
Kind of. Yeah, and I've read it over a couple of different times. We went back and forth negotiating some of the terms. They wanted thirty days, and I extended it to ninety days, because as you know, we don't get reimbursements quickly from the state.
Right.
So...
And who is this?
The West Virginia University Resource Corporation.
And we've never had this before?
No. We've never had a grant.
That they had to go...
We have never been a pass-through for WVU before.
And this grant is for what?
This is for the West Virginia University Excellence in Disabilities. And it's a office on Hartman Run Road, and they do programs for university students and faculty that are, have disabilities and...
Probably someone, federal government needed job.
I would...
Security.
I would suggest we look into this a little bit closer, because there's some contractual relationship that they're creating here. And I'm not sure why, because it's something they've done in the past, is it not?
It's something, that's their standard contract they use any time that they...
You know that always...
I know.
As a termie, that makes my hair stand on end when someone says it's a standard contract.
Well, why don't we just...
I think the table is...
Why don't we just table? I'll move the table until we find out some more information.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's tabled.
Do you want to keep it and read it?
I'll keep it and read it.
Thank you.
Let's see. WVU Sports Marketing Class.
Yeah. I have a letter that was...
That's you?
Well, I have a letter sent to me from the class, and Andrew D.P. Trentonio. It says to the county commissioners, "At the moment, the name the team contest is in a holding pattern, waiting on the legal department to move forward. With the overwhelming amount of votes from the community, we are still narrowing down the top ten team names to release to the public. The support from the community was outstanding, in which we received between twenty-five hundred and three thousand name submissions. Rich Baseball Operations hopes to have the names released as soon as possible." And I think this is just a tremendous showing. I know Rich Baseball Operations is thrilled, because we have already basically looking forward to have this team. And the bottom line is, and Eldon knows this more than ever, they want to make sure that all the copyrights and trademarks are correct, because once the ten teams are mentioned, it could be any of the ten teams. They don't want to have the team and then realize there was a trademark already. So they want to do this right, and I want to congratulate the marketing class of six forty-six, because we're moving forward. But half close to three thousand names is just unbelievable.
When I read that in the paper, the first thing that struck me was, do we have enough seats in the stadium with everyone that submitted a name?
Yeah.
What is our seat capacity?
Only the first five hundred.
Is the first five hundred that gets...
No, no, I know that. But I'm saying that if you were interested enough to submit a name, you're going to go to the game.
Yes. There's twenty-five hundred seats.
You would think.
Twenty-five hundred seats, and then on the sides, there'll be five hundred on each side for like the lawn.
Have to build another level on it.
Yeah. We already have, yeah, we have more interest than the seats. This is fantastic.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, just for the record, and I think I said this once before, and I think just for the public's information, is this is, this is the name for the baseball team.
Right.
This is not the name for the facility. We will have input into the name of the facility.
Yes.
But I think just for public information, like make sure that's clear.
Others excited.
Oh, I...
And they need to take their time.
Right. And yeah, they want to do it right. And again, when you really think about this, when Mr. Rich spoke in front of all of us, and he said in front of the media that there were more people there at that time than playing in front of, you know, the games they were playing. And now you have this kind of interest. I really think it's just even show more that we've accepted this baseball team, and we can't wait to get started. And that starts next year. Not long. Thank you.
So they're going to come back to us at another time?
Yes.
Great.
Hopefully, by the end of this week, they may be able to announce it. They just don't know.
Well, that'll wait till next Wednesday.
Just wanted to present the delinquent tax list to you. Now, you'll notice that there's not a total on it yet, because we don't know what the assessed fees and late fees is.
Tom Bloom.
He was number four on the list.
I'm heading back to Phil.
That'll be an extra buck fifty-two.
Okay.
But that's the list for your, for your perusal.
Do you need a motion on, do you need a motion on this?
Yes, to accept it, yes.
Uh, move we accept the delinquent list presented by the sheriff.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Something else.
And also the suspended list that...
I think on that list, yes. But not with this.
You should have to pay.
Suspended from the school.
I didn't get to. So this is just the ones that have been...
They will be removed from...
Be removed from the list, yes.
Okay.
I couldn't get removed.
If you get perusal, you can't get removed. There's bankruptcy and what else? Is there anything else other than bankruptcy on there? Seems like there's something else.
The card is cited on there, and it said...
Yeah, I don't think...
I believe that's all we have this year for bankruptcy.
Which is bankruptcy. Seems like there's another exception sometimes, but I can't remember what it is.
The one that's strange to me is that even if you die, it still stays on the list.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, you always have a delinquent list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes no sense.
We don't do the same thing with the voters list, do we? Maybe that's why we have such a small turnout.
It might be.
I, I have, uh, move we accept the suspended list as well. For the sheriff.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, correspondence?
I just have two items. One is a requisition for payment number eleven with the Mont General Hospital TIP in the amount of one hundred five thousand one forty-two thirty-one. And this goes back to the developer, which is Mont General Hospital.
Move we approve the payment on the Mont General Hospital TIP.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the second is a request for payment, requisition for construction draw from the Sierra Corporation. This is for the renovations to the Justice Center, and the amount is one million sixty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy cents to be paid from the cost.
How many more payments do we have?
A few.
Fifteen or several.
We got eleven million.
No, I mean to the contractor.
We got eleven million balance, so there's...
Oh, that's not too bad.
There's probably still six, seven, eight payments.
I move we approve the payment for the Justice Center.
A second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Unfinished business. Any unfinished business?
No, not that.
New business?
Eldon has some information.
Uh, this was information shared with the Morgantown Area Economic Partnership last Thursday by Don Ranicki, which was very interesting. And I thought, I thought the county should be aware of this as well. We, we all know that what we're, Montague County is one of the fastest-growing, lowest unemployment, is the lowest unemployment of the county and the state. But another interesting fact from the census data, Don Ranicki was notified, when he received a call from a reporter in, at the Washington Post, that Montague County came in second as the county with the largest decline in the country in income inequality over the past five years. What that means, that although we're all producing and increasing as a county well, the lower-income people in the county has risen at a more rapid rate to, to equalize or reduce the income inequality over the past five years. And actually, Don Ranicki pointed out that the fir-, the first, the first one really wouldn't be the same as, as Montague County, which is more or less an autonomous economy throughout the county. The first, the one that came, the county that came in first was actually a bedroom community to Nashville and not an autonomous county. So I think that speaks volumes as to what, what the business community, as well as the government in Montague County is doing to, to advance everyone in the county economically. So I thought that was very proud, or a statistic that we should be very proud of.
Another, another thing for Montague County to be brought up.
That's great.
Okay, report from elected officials. Sheriff?
Nothing.
Nothing? Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Mark?
Yes. I have a staff person that I want to introduce to you all, who we've had discussing. And Casey, could you please stand?
Yeah.
Ms. Casey Baron, approval we're bringing on as a part-time mobile home personal property deputy. What we've done is, through the vacancies we have with our mobile home department, we've kind of changed it a little bit and kind of doing more cross-training and adding more responsibility to that aspect. Instead of just doing mobile homes, also new part of the personal property. So we'll be working in the office also. But I'm going to bring Casey on. She began last Wednesday with us. She was actually with us through the summer as a temp, part-time for our dog, doing our dog tats and stuff like that.
You liked him not much, you had to come back.
That's right. I just wanted to stay.
Well, in that case, I move that we...
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And I have, thank you guys, to save life. This young lady here, Ms. Clara Gray, she is a senior at Morgantown High. And we're doing some stuff with them on the mentor program. So I'm going to give her a couple minutes here to just kind of explain what we're doing with her.
Well, like you said, I'm a senior at Morgantown High, and I took a course called Mentorship this year. And we, through that, we find someone in the community in a field that we're interested in. And I'm interested in business, predominantly finance. And I'm also interested in politics, some government. I'm in student council and stuff like that. So I found Mr. Music, and I'm mentoring for sixty hours over the whole school year, and I have to make a portfolio, and hopefully all day long.
Yeah, so she'll mentor with us in the assessor's office. So of all the county officials or county government parts, she picks the assessor's office up.
That was...
She must have some meetings.
What was the meeting you were saying? Maybe she thought you needed the most help.
You know, that could be true. We haven't done any work with her yet, but...
Well, what we're saying is you could be our future assessor, right?
That's right.
At some point when Mark returns.
In a lot of years.
She likes money, and she likes politics, and that's a good place.
It's a good place to be. But I wanted to bring Clara in. She'll probably see her through Wednesday. She'll be part of her program when she's with us. She has sixty hours to complete in the school year, so...
So she's going to be tortured to go through these meetings too?
Yeah. To enjoy it as much as we all do. And President, welcome back.
Thank you.
But...
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Carrie?
Yes. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, I do have one item if, to bring before the commission to, for you to make a motion to approve our poll workers submitted by the Democratic and the Republican Executive Committees to us so that we can finalize the process by getting all of our election officials set up and ready to go. It's on, just a little over a month away till Election Day, so things are quickly moving. But if, if you would, please pass a motion to approve the poll workers.
I move to do what she said.
Approve the poll workers submitted.
I second approving the poll workers.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the poll workers. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I, I just would bring to your attention also, we will be having two emergency ballot commissioners also. Hopefully, the same two that we've used several times in the past. And our rate of pay is going to remain the same as what we used in the primary, which would be thirty-five dollars for the training, a hundred and fifteen dollars for Election Day, and the same rates for our supply commissioners. But we are, because of our precinct consolidation that we did over the summer, we've went from seventy-one precincts to fifty-three precincts.
All right. Carrie, could I ask two quick questions? When is the last day, so we're pretty public, to register to vote for this election?
The last day to register to vote or make a name change or an address change is October the fourteenth. The last day, if anyone is needing to apply for an absentee ballot, is October twenty-ninth. Early voting begins on Wednesday, October twenty-second, and runs every day except Sunday through November the first. We will be at the Mountaineer Mall again, but in a different location this time. We'll be at the former Goodwill.
Oh, okay.
Where the Goodwill store was, instead of down on the lower front there. And the hours will be the same as our courthouse hours. Mondays, nine to seven. Tuesday through Saturday, nine to five.
Have you, did you have a chance at all since, I know we've done it in the past since I saw Clara here, the possibility of going to the Morgantown High or University High to possibly see if we can register those high school students? Is that a, is that a possibility?
We do that every year.
Okay.
At the beginning of the school year.
Oh.
So we have been to all three of the high schools.
Okay.
And that's just a normal part of what we, what we do. So we have already been there to those three. Two other items, just to remind you, and Diane may have put it on your calendars. We will be having public testing for early voting equipment on Wednesday, October the fifteenth, at two o'clock.
Okay.
And the public testing for Election Day will be Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, I think is the date, at two o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Ron, anything from Greenville?
Yes, sir, nothing. Good to see you back.
They're still trying to find the name for the team.
Okay.
And then we're going to try to find the name for the park, the facility. We won't let them forget that it's in Greenville.
Appreciate that.
Okay, Department Supervisor. Diane, anything else? Bobby?
Yeah, I do have something. I got this late, it's too late for the agenda, but I'm working on the University Town Center project on the infrastructure for the water and sewer. We already did the roads. So MUB opened the bids for the water line, and we really need you to approve it today. And then we'll open the bids for the sewer project on the ninth, and we'll get the approval on the fourteenth from the Morgantown Utility Board. After you approve this, we'll send it to the utility board to approve at the same time. Then we'll get the sewer on the fifteenth. And with your approval on that, after they approve it, then we can go ahead and award a bid on the fifteenth.
What do we, what exactly are we...
Yeah, what is the bid?
The low bid was from Snyder Environmental, and with, it was two hundred nineteen nine eighty-eight ninety-five. And then with MUB's soft cost in there, it comes to three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And it was thirty thousand dollars under the projected estimate that MUB had. They estimated it before the bids went out at three forty, so come in free cash.
So, so MUB has accepted that low bid?
Yes, sir.
And they're, and they're asking us to approve so they can receive payment?
What happened is Brian Gallagher from Montview, and myself and MUB went over the bids yesterday, and we decided to approve that bid. And we're bringing it to you, and after you approve it, send it back to MUB, and then it'll go to MUB's board. And once they approve it, then we'll prove the sewer bid.
Let me, let me do the sewer bid.
And then we'll put it out, we'll, we'll award it both on the fifteenth. But we're going to do this one first, and then send it to MUB. And MUB will do the sewer, and then send it out.
And send it out, I understand.
It's just a, their, it's their project, but since it's a TIP, we have to get your approval also.
Because we have a bank.
Yes, sir.
With our exhaust decks. I, I move we approve the recommendation of the selection committee.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renetta, anything else? Champion? Ken? Ben? Ron, do you have anything else? How about our guests? Do you want to just identify yourself? And are you here just to be our friend, or are you here to...
Did you tell the students to hear again?
Those students are here, yeah.
Just for the record, we'd like to have a record when we have...
I'm Justin Webster. I was here last week for a political science class, and I'm now here for a journalism class. Again, I had the choice to go to another public, public government meeting, and I enjoyed this so much, I decided to come back.
Very good. We're glad to have you.
He's a politician.
Glad to have you.
I, I'm just a journalist, I'm no politician.
He's no politician, just a journalist. He just likes us. Fun. Okay, good.
I'm Maggie Goncheski. I'm a senior. And we're, her and I, both in a political science two-twenty class. So we're, we got the same thing to choose from, I think, three different county meetings, and we chose to come here.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Good.
That's great.
We, we welcome you to attend our meetings. I think it's good that you get some firsthand insight into how county government operates. One of the things that I'm being reminded of, I'll say this in a little whisper, it is an election year, that how much people don't know about county government. And I think the more we get young people involved, and the more aware young people are, the less chance we'll have people distorting what the role of county government is. County Commissioners?
I have anything to discuss?
Two quick things. One, I want to welcome you back, Bill. The pressure of having to move every motion every week is too much. So I'm really glad you're back, so I can, I can take that pressure off. And the other thing is, and you just mentioned that about the community, there's a letter to the editor, and at first I was, oh, here we go. Here's another letter to the editor, talking about the roads and how upset they were with the politicians and the State Department. And then there's this nice paragraph in there that says, "Accept the county commission. We really appreciate everything they're trying to do." And that's kind of neat to know, that, you know, that people do know we're trying to do things, and we are listening to them. And they said that, you know, it was just really nice after getting beat up so much that it was just nice to see that, you know, the, the community out in Smithtown realizes that. Again, it's Route seventy-three, and they know we're trying everything we can, and hopefully we could work out a solution to this Department of Highways problem. Thank you.
Well, I guess, first of all, it's good to be back. I'd like to be able to say to you that, that there is, this condition that I have has been finalized, but it's not. I'm still searching for a solution to it. You know, it's, it's, I found it interesting to go into a hospital and after two surgeries, come out feeling worse than what you did when you went in, or have more of a problems than what you did when you went in. So I'm still searching for a solution. Although, contrary to some rumors, I'm going to make it. I mean, I haven't made any funeral matches. So my name will still be on the ballot, I think, Carrie. And one of the things I do, just want to pass on to you, is, is that when we have experiences like, like I had, is that you gain appreciations that you maybe didn't have before, at least to a degree that you never had before. And one of the things that I've come to, to gain new insight into is, is what the handicap goes through. And having to walk with a cane, first time in my life. And having to deal with doors that don't have automatic openers. Having to deal with... Having to deal with uh parking spaces that, that don't have enough room for you to get out unless you have a handicap permit. Uh, chairs, common things as chairs, even in some of the, the doctor's appointments that I went to uh, back in the early stages, I had a more difficulty than what I have now in going from a walker to a chair and with no arms on it. Uh, it's, it's not easy. And, and something is, is what, someone may never pay attention to that unless you were handicapped. But uh, I, I guess uh, I'll just share that with you, that I think all of us go through that, that uh sometimes it takes new experiences to uh gain new appreciations or even some appreciation for conditions that other people are faced with. The uh, the other thing is that uh, I can't tell you how many phone calls I've received. I can't tell you how many cards I've received. Uh, and I've had some people stop over by the house. Uh, I, I have had some free lunches. Uh, I, I thought that'd be good to set as a prerequisite, if you wanna come and visit me. Yeah, bring me lunch and I'll talk to you. But I have been available by phone throughout this whole thing, uh, and, and accessible, so anyone that, one that you get ahold of me could have. Uh, and uh, it is good to be back. And, and believe me, the old saying, and we all realize that uh, whether it's a family member or yourself, there's nothing more important to you than your health. And all we need to do is learn how to take care of it before we have problems with it. We all would be better off. And that's all I have.
I'd just like to add, uh, add to that, that I, I'm, I'm very proud of uh of your, your continued work and focus, even though you're going through some horrible devastating pain and uh, some real suffering, but yet you were always there, you always responded, you always had the county uh foremost in mind, so we're, I'm very, personally very, very proud of you and the leadership you have.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else?
What to do?
Well, we have comments from the
Oh.
Oh, comments in the
Sorry.
Not to be
We already, we already talked to everyone except Tim.
Nothing to report.
No comments from the poll. I have a, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.